I've self-taught myself. So like other girls in the office, they'll be like, hey, will you braid my hair real quick? I'll be like, yeah. I can do that. I can do braids.
...
Information to Commissioner Cruz in the past. He gave the exact information to Commissioner Meitzner and I in the past. So it's not new information that the FBI is reviewing this case.
I'd just like a copy of the words, that's all I ask for.
I'll read them to you. "The week of the death of Cedric Lofton, the FBI, who works for the Department of Justice, requested all information about the case. They are reviewing that information, and we have provided it, and we will provide any additional information they request."
Sir, may I respond?
Yeah. Commissioner Meitzner has the right first, thank you. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the written copy of the motion. I've read it a couple of times, and I think the letter that says that we provide a letter to indicate our support, I'm trusting that the letter will basically just say this paragraph. It doesn't need to say, doesn't need to expand or go into any other detail. So, and it'll be signed by the Chair, I assume? Or all of us, I don't care.
We have not seen the letter. They're supposed to bring it back up on Monday night, the one from the task force, and we could vote on, I would like all the commissioners to see what we would send to support their letter.
But I think that the motion is that we, you know, shortens, we provide a letter of support to the task force as indicated in the motion. We're not necessarily, you know, whatever they write, they write, but the motion is that we, is very simple, that we don't give any details about what they need to do or not, it's that we support the task force.
That's, the main goal is that we support the task force.
If that letter is as simple as this paragraph, then I am supportive of that.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
So, my question about the sheriff's words is not in rebuttal to them. I mean, I do remember receiving them, I just think it's important that we provide that again, since it was mentioned today. I think that having this conversation today means that we support this, and so that's exactly what we should, in my opinion, be doing, since the community has been asking for it from the very beginning. So that's my, that's my question about that. So I'm glad that we're doing this, I think it's important to show support, especially since we have been talking about supporting the work of this task force that was developed by Sedgwick County. So, that was my question about the sheriff's words. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
So, just, do I understand, we're not asking the DOJ to investigate Cedric Lofton case, we're asking them to review, I guess, what they're, basically do what they're already doing, to review whether federal crimes involving civil rights violations occurred. We're asking them to do a review, we're not asking them to investigate. I'm a little confused as to what, I don't know what this letter's doing for us, I guess.
Not doing much, but...
Can someone, are we asking the DOJ to investigate Cedric Lofton cases, is that what this is?
No.
What are we doing, please?
As I understand it, it's, and Commissioner Lopez can jump in, it's her motion. So I understand it, it's merely giving the task force our support for their asking the Department of Justice to review criminal civil rights violations in the Cedric Lofton case.
I guess, back to my initial point here, is this the purpose, goal, and work of the task force? They're seeking criminal, they want criminal charges filed, they want convictions, that's what they want. And they don't want to use a civil, they don't want to use a citizen's grand jury, apparently. They want the DOJ to get involved, and that's, they're seeking this, and they, their thoughts are, this was a civil rights case, and therefore the DOJ should get involved and do those things.
Well, I don't know what exactly, I was going to call the attorney that was going to draft the letter for the task force after this meeting. I don't know what specifically this committee is asking for. Right now, all we're supporting, is my understanding, is a review by the FBI and Department of Justice, which is all, which is what they're doing right now.
They're doing that already anyways, whether we give them this letter of support or not, that's already happening. Whether the task force actually reaches out to the Department of Justice, they're already doing what they're asking them to, I mean, the DOJ is already doing essentially what the task force would be asking them to do anyway.
That's my understanding of it.
I don't, I don't know, I guess I don't know why we're doing this today. I really want the task force to focus on the things I read, they have a lot of work to do here. And if they want to seek criminal charges, they have a tool in the toolbox in Kansas laws that's very effective. I don't know what to vote here, Chairman, I guess I'm confused by why we're doing this today.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. So, today is the first time I've heard that a review has been started, which is one of the reasons I brought this today, and then finding out, apparently other commissioners have known, but I'm finding that out today, so I am happy to hear that that's already been going. Since the first time we talked about this, I've been very clear that I think this needs to be driven by our community. We have to have a community response, and we need to support it. That was the whole goal with this task force, is getting our community members who have a stake in this together, have them talk about what needs to change, and then support whatever, however we can from a commission level, from a city council level, and hopefully from our state partners as well, to seek these changes out. And so the task force had their first meeting yesterday, this was what they came up with, was to send a letter to the DOJ, and I think it shows that we are responding to them. I believe that showing our support this way can hopefully help build trust with not only the task force, but with our community. So I do think this is the right step going forward. Maybe not everybody agrees, but I do want this group of individuals that we have asked so much of to be a part of this, to know that we are listening to what you're asking, we are listening to what you're saying, we want you to guide us in how we go forward, and how we make changes in the future, and this is just the first step in proving that. So, please know that we hear you, we support you, and we're going to have your back on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I think the, to Commissioner Howell's point about, you know, when I was first, when we first started talking about the task force, my number one question was, what is the scope of their work? What is the goal of this task force? What is going to be their mission? And I'm repeatedly told that the task force will develop that. You know, I remember yesterday when I asked Chairman Dennis about who will be voting members, and we had a robust conversation, I guess it was Wednesday, today's Friday, about, you know, they will determine that, and so this is what they've determined. And so, I think that if that was the premise of this task force, was to let them decide what they do, and they have come up with this, it's nothing new, I mean, I've been talking to them for a while, so I knew this was coming, that's important. Being engaged with them, listening to them, I mean, it was a task force developed by Sedgwick County, I think it's only appropriate that the commission, the Sedgwick County Commission, supports the task force that was developed by the Sedgwick County government. So that's, I guess, where I'm at with this.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
So with that in mind, Chairman, can we ask them to develop their draft letter to the DOJ, I guess, and bring that back before we vote on this? I mean, you're asking us to vote before they do their work, I don't think that's fair to us. We need to see that writing to know what we're voting on. That's, that is fair. If they want to go forward, and by the way, I'll just say upfront, I don't think the DOJ is going to listen to the B O C C or to the task force, I think the DOJ is going to do whatever they want to do. They are a federal government agency. They go where they want to go, and they do what they want to do. And the reality is, they're not going to pivot because we or anybody asks them here locally to do anything. So again, this may make us feel better, at the end of the day, I would like to also know, does the task force, have they been assured, or are they aware, have they been informed, I mean, Commissioner Lopez just mentioned, she didn't know. I wonder if the task force is aware of the fact that the DOJ and the U.S. Attorney and the FBI have been, in fact, involved and informed of what's going on here in Sedgwick County? So if, if they know that, does this even have any real purpose? Again, I would like to know that they know that, that they still want to go forward, bring us a draft, then let us vote. To me, that's a much better way to go forward. If we have to vote today, Chairman, you're asking me to put my name and my authority or my reputation, if you will, on someone else's letter, I have no idea what they're going to say. That's not fair. So, I think this is backwards. We need, we need to let them do what they, if they want to develop this letter, if they want to continue to move forward, let them do that, but let them bring that information to us, and then let us vote. I'd make a substitute motion, Mr. Chairman, we would ask the task force to develop their letter, and we would review that and vote at a later time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a second for the substitute motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Motion fails for lack of second. And I'm hearing you, Commissioner Howell. I believe that whatever the task force comes up with Monday, that they present, to want to send to the Department of Justice, that we should weigh in on that before the, on the Wednesday meeting, as it's coming up. I started this meeting purposely with a statement that it already is under review. So I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that it is already under review, and I don't think a lot of people understood that. And even though Commissioner Meitzner and I had been briefed by the sheriff some time back, I truly, until he reminded me, I had not remembered that it was already under review by the FBI, who works for the Department of Justice. So, I think this motion right now is appropriate to let the task force know that we support their efforts. We need to take a look at what they write on Monday, and maybe at that point in time, when they meet again on Monday, and they are aware of the fact that the FBI is already reviewing this case, they may change their mind, I don't know. But I want to make sure that, I am always on record of saying that I support the task force as they move forward, because we have to find out what kind of things that we need to change as we move forward, to make sure that something like happened to Cedric Lofton never happens again. So, that's why I support what we're doing right now, and Wednesday we can review it again. Commissioner Howell.
So just to be clear, again, I hope that people hear me, I am supportive of the task force. I said again, I'm supportive of the task force, please hear me. They have a mission, and I want them to do what they were called together to do. This is, my opinion, not, it doesn't fit their mission, but I support the task force. If they want to go forward, then I think they should bring us specifically what letter they want to file with our names behind that letter, and I would potentially support that, but it's unfair for us to do that on the front end. I think, and I've asked for delays in the past, they have been respected in the past most of the time. This meeting today was called an hour ago, before we started today, an hour prior, and I got the information during the meeting today. This is rushed, it's unnecessary, it's duplicative, and we're putting our weight behind something we have no idea what that's going to be until later. I'm surprised, when I actually asked my, asked for support amongst my colleagues for, to help me testify on a bill I think is important to Sedgwick County, if I don't have the exact words right now, I don't get support. We will wordsmith at the bench what I would be allowed to say. We're all very careful about putting our weight behind someone else's words. In this case, we're giving them a blank sheet of paper, say whatever you want to say. I don't, I just think this is the wrong process. I support the task force, especially in their mission they were called together to perform. I know that the DOJ is doing whatever they want to do. I still, again, I'm going to call for the community to understand the citizen's grand jury is their only real option for what they are seeking here today. I'll say it again, and again, and again. That's the outside investigation that can happen if people want it to happen. The DOJ is not going to pivot based on anything we do in a letter from the Sedgwick County Commission or the task force. I'm going to vote no, I don't know why we're doing this today. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Can I make one quick statement before I vote?
Certainly.
Okay. I know when we put the task force together, there was some comments in some commissioners and maybe the council members, because we, it was a combined task force of the city and county, and I think this helps, that we didn't formally vote to approve it, but this helps confirm, from my perspective, that there is a task force, and I acknowledge them, I thank them for what they're doing. I have not spoken to any one of their organizations, or individually, the people that are on the task force. I thought that they were supposed to operate independently, as we've discussed. I will not try to influence what they should or should not do, I am not trying to give them direction, what they should or should not do. I think it's a little bit inappropriate, from my perspective, that any commissioner or council member is trying to influence members to do one way or another, but that's just my own thought, because I thought it was supposed to be independent, and I'm going to respect their independence, and I will not try to influence what they should or should not do. So, with that said, I also am, I want to reemphasize that this motion is a good motion, and I want to, I want to respect that the letter that we send mirrors the language that's in the motion, and does not expand, again, to tell them what to do or not to do, other than what the motion said. So with that, I will vote aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Cruz does have her last one.
Yeah, I have one more question. So, I will agree with Commissioner Howell about how this is pretty rushed. I mean, I was given two hours via text message from our county manager about this meeting. Clearly, this has been planned since last night, and there was no communication to anyone about this. I mean, this didn't get written this morning, it's been discussed. So, I guess I just want to make sure that, you know, we all care about this, and I think it's important to note that this kind of is really, really rushed, and I wonder, you know, although I am supportive of this, I'd like to be very deliberate in how we work together in the future to talk about this, since we all care about this. You know, I have been discussing this with everybody, the only time it is discussed with me is when I approach someone to talk about it, which is very disheartening, because we should all be working together about this, but I'm given very last-minute information, I'm given, you know, only information that I ask for, that I seek out, I mean, there's been nothing told to me, which I think is very disheartening, considering that I represent a very large group of African-Americans in this community. The insinuation that anyone would try to influence is very ridiculous, and the fact that I am listening to my constituents, I am sharing in their concern, and so if that insinuation was sent to me, I reject that. I am supportive of this, I've been calling for it from the very beginning, because it's the right thing to do. A child died in our custody, it's the right thing to do to take another look, and however that extra look needs to come, this is the right thing to do. And so, I'll be voting aye.
Thank you, and I appreciate Commissioner Meitzner's comments, I concur with all of his comments. As far as Commissioner Cruz's comments, last night, actually Pete Meitzner and I were at the home show, and we were not working this issue at the home show, I was walking around looking at what was happening there, and so we started discussing this this morning about 8:30. So, there was, all of the comments that were written here were written by either legal this morning, or by our communications department this morning, so there was nothing, haven't been worked earlier than this, we would have let you know earlier if we had that opportunity. So, Commissioner Lopez.
I also think it's important just to note that on Tuesday at our staff meeting, we did talk about having special meetings on Fridays to go over legislative issues. Yesterday, this meeting was put on our calendars as a hold for legislative items, which is why we're meeting today. Since the task force met last night, I felt it was appropriate to take into consideration what they said yesterday, and show how much, you know, we really are trying to help them in however we can, and by doing that, by showing the support the next day, I thought was the appropriate way to go. So, the conversation started this morning, as Commissioner Dennis said, but I am glad that we have the support to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this time I see no other comments, we've already polled Commissioner Meitzner, so Madam Clerk, poll the group.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item B, discussion of legislative items.
Tanya. We have two items to discuss this morning, as I recall.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. You are correct, but as of late last night, we also have one additional item that I'd like to discuss with you, and if I can, I'd like to start with that item. Yesterday, we heard from our lobbyist in Topeka, Jason Watkins, that there is a House Bill 2531 that's related to agriculture, and that is what Nicole is passing out to you today, just right now. So, let me read that House Bill to you. An Act Concerning Counties and Townships Relating to Rights of Ways Authorizing Certain Persons to Use the Right-of-Way of Any County Road or Township Road to Install, Maintain, and Operate a Pipeline for Agricultural Activities. So, House Bill 2531 would permit, upon approval of the Board of County Commissioners, any person engaged in agricultural activity may construct, maintain, and operate pipelines in pursuit of an agricultural activity along, upon, under, and across the right-of-way of any county or township road in conformity with the laws and regulations of the State of Kansas and the county in which the pipeline is located. The bill specifies the application process and the responsibilities of the owner of a pipeline. The Kansas Association of Counties is not in favor of this, they state that the enactment of this bill would increase administrative oversight cost for the application process and appeal hearings, and according to the association, the bill would put counties at risk of paying for road damages or lawsuits if an applicant damages a road and is unable or unwilling to pay for repairs. This morning, we did reach out to Jim Weber, our county engineer, and his comment is, the right-of-way is already crowded with public utilities. There is a hearing on this next Wednesday at 3:30 in the House Agricultural Committee, so wanted to get your input if you feel that that is something that we want to weigh in on, whether with written or verbal testimony, and we feel we can reach out to Public Works to obtain some of that testimony, if you'd like to pursue that.
Okay. Couple of questions, we do put utilities in our right-of-ways right now, we, one of the questions that came up here about a year ago was, one of the broadband providers was wanting to put some of their communications in places that weren't authorized. So, we didn't approve that because of the damage that it would do to our roads, they actually wanted to put it in the edge of the road instead of in the right-of-way. So, I guess, since we've got designated places for utilities, I don't know why you wouldn't call whatever this pipeline is a utility, why that we couldn't direct that it goes into the same areas as other utilities.
We might need to get Jim Weber to weigh in a little bit more on this, and I, he is not available at the moment because he is sick, but we can certainly look into that a little bit further, Commissioner.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners? Well, I understand KAC may have more information than I've got available to make a decision off the top of my head on this one, but again, if we provide space for the utilities, and it conforms with all of our requirements, and it doesn't damage our roads or the other infrastructure that we have in place, I don't know if I could, you're going to have to give me a lot more information before I'd say that I wouldn't approve it, but...
And like I said, this came in late last night, and I just wanted to be able to update you this morning regarding this, so we can get some more information, get that to you, Commissioner.
Okay. Commissioner Meitzner.
Yeah, thank you, I agree, Mr. Chairman, a little more. When is the hearing they're going to have?
The hearing is Wednesday at 3:30.
Okay. And have we heard from our lobbyist on this, anything?
He did not weigh in, he just weighed in to say that KAC is against this.
And I, yeah, I would agree with the chairman, I'm not sure why KAC would be opposed to this. I'm kind of a fan of development, and right-of-ways are involved in development, so on the surface, I don't have an objection to it, but I guess I would need to know further of why we should object, or get involved. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And it probably needs a little bit more background on what a pipeline that is agriculture-related, the only things that I know right now are there's a whole lot of center pivots out there, but usually those go from wherever the well is, out to the center pivot, so I guess I'd need a little bit more detail on what an agricultural pipeline would relate to, so...
Sure. Let me see if I can't get Jim Weber and get some more information, and like I said, get, we'll see if we can get some more information from KAC, but that's information I have on this.
Commissioner Howell has a question.
I do, thank you, Chairman, I do see a difference between the words along, upon, under, and across. Again, if this is agricultural pipeline, I don't know that I would agree this is a utility, it's probably privately owned, more than likely water, electricity, or gas that's going, it can go on private property, obviously, they can make agreements with private property owners, maybe their own land to install these pipelines on their own property, or someone else's property. But the word across, to me, is interesting, because if you own property on both sides of a road, and you need to be able to cross a public right-of-way, to me, that might be more reasonable, as long as it's permitted, and it's installed in such a way that it's tracked and known about, so again, if there's protections to the owner of the public right-of-way, the government or township or whatever it would be, to me, that's more reasonable. I would like to, I'd like to split the question, to me, if this was about going to cross a public right-of-way, to cross the road, so to speak, I think that's probably fine, it's reasonable. But going, you know, along, upon, and under, in my opinion, are unreasonable. It may be convenient, but it's not necessary. So, to me, packaged the way it is, I can see why they would oppose it, but I don't know that I would mind necessarily allowing someone to have a legal way to cross a street, to cross a road. Just an idea, thank you.
Okay. Well, again, I think we need more information for, we can weigh in on it at this time, so...
Okay. Let me follow up and get some more information on the commissioners.
Okay. You want to speak about the election bills?
I do. So we have two election bills, both having hearings next week, Thursday at 10:30 in the Senate, Fed and State, Federal and State Affairs. The first one is Senate Bill 388, that is an Act Concerning Elections Relating to Mail Ballots, requiring the use of the United States Postal Service when returning a mail, excuse me, when returning a ballot by mail. Let me speak a little bit more on this. Senate Bill 388 would require a voter, or an individual on the voter's behalf, returning an advance voting ballot to personally deliver the ballot to the county election officer, or to return the ballot by mail through the United States Postal Service. The Secretary of State and the Office of Judicial Administration state that the enactment of Senate Bill 388 would not have a fiscal effect on the operations of either agency. I spoke to our election commissioner, Angela Cadillo, she does not plan to testify on this bill, I asked her a little bit more about this, if she had any comments. The only thing that she thought that she saw in this bill was that it may have an effect or the ability to no longer have the 24-hour mail ballot drop boxes, is the way that she was interpreting this bill.
Yes, when I read the bill, it looks like the biggest change in the bill, it, most of this bill is already in effect today, it looks like, and it looks like this is the change to add that the mail has to be by U.S. Postal Service, at least that's the way I interpreted it. So, I don't know what the purpose of that is, that says that it has to be by the U.S. Postal Service, but I don't have a problem with it being by U.S. Postal Service, so I guess I don't know who the drafter of this changed to the law, what they had in mind when they added that. Maybe Commissioner Howell knows, so I'll turn it over to Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. So last Thursday, there was an hour and a half hearing in front of the... So last Thursday, there was an hour and a half hearing in front of the Senate on election security. One of the things they brought up was the issue of ballot boxes. I don't know the history of this in Sedgwick County, but I think we, I talked to our election commissioner, Angela Cadillo. I think we have 14 ballot boxes currently in play. Johnson County has seven, which is interesting, they have less than we do. I don't know before the last election cycle if we had ballot boxes anywhere. Is this a fairly new, it's a fairly new thing for Sedgwick County, I understand. There's some confusion whether the CTCL grant paid for those or whether or not the Help America Vote Act grant paid for this. I think actually the HAVA grant actually paid for those ballot boxes, so that needs to be noted as well. They were provided by the Secretary of State through the HAVA grant. I think that's, we need to note that because it wasn't provided, it wasn't provided through the CTCL grant here in Sedgwick County. One of the points that was made during the hearing last week was that the chain of custody is not defined in statute. And they pointed out that in Johnson County, and I asked about Sedgwick County, the chain of custody here requires a Republican and Democrat election worker to work together and they go out and they collect the ballots each day. And they also close the ballot boxes at 7:00 on election day. But the process of collecting those ballots is bipartisan by two people. They put them in a lock box and they have to fill out a log sheet. They actually have to count the ballots and log them in and put them in a lock box that is under a key, a locking key. And the process is laid out by our local policy, and I think that's the point here. Johnson County has, their policy requires four people. But the problem is, in Johnson County, as those ballots were being collected, their log sheets that were requested by the people who testified show that only one person picked up those ballots. And the chain of custody was not regarded, so to speak, because they had a single person picking up ballots. So it brings in, it brings in security questions, you know, could someone inject ballots or remove ballots because the process is flawed? And I don't know the answer to that question. I mean, theoretically, is it possible? Yes, it's possible. Do I think it'd happen? Probably not. But regardless, the chain of custody is an issue. So if we are going to have ballot boxes, I think my personal opinion is we need to have a statewide policy given to us by the Secretary of State on how this should be done. And that should be audited. And it should be something that the Board of Canvassers has access to. The Board of Canvassers in Johnson County did not even look at the pickup logs by their election workers. And so that was something they discovered after the Board of Canvassers completed their work. And so I do think there's an issue regarding policy on ballot boxes. It was also noted that ballot boxes are not defined in Kansas law anywhere, that we can even have them at all, that it was a choice made by the Secretary of State and they were deployed and now they're being utilized. But there's nothing in Kansas law that actually authorizes the use of ballot boxes. So to me, this is an issue in terms of election security. I think there are things we can do here. I think that this bill, Senate Bill 388, if it was passed as it's currently written, we would have to get rid of the 14 ballot boxes in Sedgwick County. So the question is, do we want to keep ballot boxes? If we do, what about the policies relating to those ballot boxes? Should they be recognized in Kansas law that they are deployable and the policies around how to collect ballots needs to be defined in Kansas law somehow? So I do think there's issues here. I don't know that I would support the bill as it's currently written, but I do think there are some issues we need to probably speak to.
Well, thanks for that clarification, but the way I read the bill, it just scratched out the word mail and inserted United States Postal Service. So it never mentioned ballot drop boxes anywhere in the entire bill that I found. So I don't know where that.
It changes the word may to the word shall. They shall be returned through USPS. They must be returned. In other words, there's no longer an opportunity to do it that way, but they must be returned. There was a strikeout word from the word may to the word shall in that bill. I don't have it in front of me, unfortunately.
I might have missed that, but does that mean that they couldn't drop them off at one of our advanced voting locations?
No, I believe the way she read the bill, they could still be dropped off. You use the word election official, that could be interpreted election office, but I think what, in the use of that word, I believe it means a poll, a supervising judge at a poll site would also be acceptable, the way I understand the bill.
Yeah, that's the way I understand it, talking to Angela as well.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz has a question.
Well, that's my question, is if somebody walks into the elections office. So if it's not clear, how can we get that spelled out? I mean, I think it's, how long have our drop boxes been used? Did you state that?
I have not stated that, and that's something I'd have to check with Angela on that, on the timeline of how long we've had them.
Okay. So I'd like to know how long they've been used. How much money did we spend on buying them? You know, anytime we're talking about voting, making it more accessible to folks is what we should be trying to do. There was no fraud that was had with this election. I mean, we see, I just don't see the purpose of, you know, making voters who have had the option to drop it off at a location now putting a stamp and putting it in their mail. It seems like we're trying to make things a little harder for folks to vote, which is really unfortunate. So what exactly is the ask?
I think the ask is, is this something that we want to provide any testimony on in opposition or in favor of?
And this is to do away with drop boxes?
It doesn't specifically say that, but when I talked to Angela, she, as she interprets this, she feels that this could have an effect on our ability to have drop boxes.
Well, I think in light of making, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Well, I think in light of making, you know, our voters to have access, especially, you know, we have, I think it's important to create an opportunity for voters to have the greatest access to vote. And I would not be in support of this if it means to eliminate drop boxes.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz? Commissioner Lopez, always looking at that side. I apologize.
That's okay. Thank you. When did you say they were bringing this up?
Next Thursday at 10:30.
Okay. I think in addition to Commissioner Cruz's questions, I'd like to know how many ballots have been dropped off in those boxes in past elections, just so we have an idea of this, the impact that this could make if we're no longer able to use those. But I agree, I mean, any, trying to, you know, making voting harder for anybody is really not what any of us should be pushing for. So I would hope that's not the case. If we could get some clarification on that, just to make sure, I mean, if this doesn't have, if this is not going to get rid of the ballot boxes, I think that's a completely different discussion. But to remove those, I think, would be highly problematic for Sedgwick County and our voters.
Okay.
Thank you.
Also, when you're talking to our election commissioner, it seems like, I recall, we have some kind of security on those ballot boxes and we remove everything out of them each night at a certain point. So I'd like to know what kind of security we have on those to make sure that somebody's not dropping stacks of stuff in, that maybe trying to pack the ballot box.
That's my understanding as well, but I'll get more of the details on that.
Okay. Thank you. And we have another one on elections.
We do. This is Senate Bill 389. This will also have a hearing next Thursday at 10:30. So this is an act concerning elections relating to voting systems and procedures, requiring voter-verified paper ballots with a distinctive watermark. I talked to Angela about this. She, the only concern that she had on this was the production of the paper on this. She felt that there may be some challenges in effectively having this done in 2022, just with paper production. But other than that, she had no other concerns. She said if this is adopted, she will move forward and implement that. And she felt that, you know, it provides the security on the paper ballot. So only concern there is just a challenge in implementing for 2022 with paper production.
And it would be effective if this bill passed for the governor's election in 2022?
That's what, I believe that's what she thought it would be instituted in 2022.
I can understand her concerns. There are supply chain problems everywhere. We keep hearing, even here in Sedgwick County, that we can't get the paper that we need in order to be able to operate our print shop over here across the street. So that probably ought to be something that ought to be considered of some kind of an alternative if we can't comply with that law. Because this is talking about every ballot, advance ballots they send out. This is talking about ballots that someone may come in and want to provide a provisional ballot. It's talking about ballots that if they come in and we can print off their ballot because they want to do it on a paper ballot instead of on the machines. So it could have an impact on us if we can't get the supplies.
Correct.
Because I don't know how people would vote if we, and still comply with the law if we can't get the paper.
She is not going to testify in this, but she did say that the Association of Election Officials will be providing testimony on this. But at this time, there wasn't anything that she could provide on what that testimony looks like, so.
Okay. Very good. Any other commissioners have any questions on this one?
Commissioner or Chairman, if I can, I might just mention that Jim Weber is on the phone if we want to go back to the House bill on the pipeline.
Very good. We'll get it so that we can hear him. Jim, can you hear us?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes. Do we have space in our right-of-way that you can put, and I couldn't imagine this would be a long type of a pipeline if it's for agricultural use. Do you have any idea what they're talking about or would we have room in our right-aways for some kind of a pipeline?
So I don't know what the history of this, why this bill has come into being, but we're required to accommodate public utilities in the right-of-way. So we do that all the time. Public utilities are generally serving larger numbers of people. They're generally regulated by somebody and they have the ability, they make money, they have a revenue stream that comes with them. I think, to me, I did hear the discussion. I think maybe the idea that, I suppose we're probably talking about water unless, I haven't gone to look at the statutes this thing referenced to see what all things fall under agriculture. I don't know if a meat packing facility is agriculture and they get to run refrigeration lines or I don't know what all they might need to run. But I think the issue is that we try to limit the number of private utilities that are in the road right-of-way. Not that we can't probably fit them into a lot of places, but it does get crowded out there and it gets, it's hard to fit everybody in. But the bigger issue is, are they going to be responsible for moving it, repairing it, you know, 20 years down the road? Who do you go after? I would also point out, I think Commissioner Howell hit on something, and we are already accommodating people that I would say are private utilities that have to cross the right-of-way within our utility permit program. We probably have some farmers that are pumping water under to cross the road. It's a short crossing. It's kind of a limited exposure. We've got, in different times, we've had sand companies that have had their piping infrastructure and crossing the road so they could pump from one pit back to the other side of the road and out. So we make those things happen. I'm just concerned that this one is so wide open and I don't know what it means that, you know, Farmer A, who's got quarter sections a mile apart, might need a line. And then Farmer B, who's just doesn't have the same quarter section a mile apart, might think he needs a line. And then we just start to get crowded and complicated. It seems like I'm having a hard time figuring out what the justification is for doing it, at least not in Sedgwick County, where I think if somebody had a legitimate need, we'd find a way to make it happen.
Very good. Well, any commissioners have a question for Mr. Weber? I don't see any right now. We need to keep an eye on it and see what comes out. Ask Jason to keep his eye on it and give us more details on what the intent is.
I will do that.
Okay. Anything else that needs to come before the Board of County Commissioners in the special meeting today? I don't see anything. We made it into February without having a special meeting this year, so we'll see how much longer we can go. Thanks for everyone for their flexibility. This meeting is adjourned.